Programming, historical feedback on program. Programming and initial options for growth led by Lauren Snyder, Deputy County Manager.
Okay.
Hi Lauren.
Hi.
Long time no see.
Yes. Yes. Okay, I'm sure. Oops. Here we go. Uh, so Duncan is doing something related to becoming a U S citizen?
Oh.
And so he's on his way back, but um I think we did not ask him to change his schedule since those are hard to get. So um I'm just gonna give you, we're trying to give you just quick up to date um updates on the reorganization. So you know where we're at um and just high communication about what's going on and what our next steps are. So our timeframe has changed a little bit based from when we first uh had it, had this discussion. Um we moved it back about six weeks, about a month and a half um to make sure that we had enough time to be thoughtful and to get um enough stakeholder input. So right now we're working on getting feedback on programming over the last five years. So at our last regular meeting, you all saw the survey and the flyer that's gonna go out to all of our households, asking them to engage on a quick survey about um any programming they've had from both PROS or GOL. And so that should be going out the week of the twenty third. The mailer has been translated, the survey should be done being translated tomorrow. We're gonna have any final reviews and then send it off to be printed uh with things going uh in the mail uh the week of the twenty third. So um yay, that's exciting. I mean um that's a really great opportunity to get in front of folks and get good feedback. Um then we're gonna really start working on hopefully by July eighteenth, identifying areas for potential growth or new programming and then operational efficiencies. So between now and basically mid-July, that's what we're gonna be focusing on as we wait to get feedback from that mailer. Um by July eighteenth, we're gonna have a pretty in-depth work session with you all to try and talk about where your priorities are for the department moving forward, what we heard from the mailers, so come back with synthesized information for you all um as well as what internal staff said. Um our hope is that by August eighth, we really have an idea of where we're headed. So org charge, staffing requirements for any type of programming expansion or reduction, uh what that department budget's gonna look like. Uh we did this because we really need by mid-August departments are gonna be work, meeting with finance staff on actually creating their twenty twenty-six budget. So that is an internal deadline that we are going to have to meet. Um so just FYI and why, why we have it in early August. And then through September and November, um we're really gonna be working on rebranding. So slowing down a little bit in the process to be thoughtful in rebranding. Um any uh department processes, values or goals, working on that. And hopefully by the end of the year, beginning of twenty twenty-six, we really are ready to launch any new structures, rebranding of the department.
You made it to our U S citizen.
Kids.
Yay! Duncan, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome to this situation. Bold to take it on.
Thank you.
Uh so Duncan, just feel free to hop in whatever you want.
Cool.
Um so I just wanted to spend this time to make sure you all were comfortable with the programming and had an up, up-to-date understanding of the programming. All of the deputies are here to correct me if I'm uh misstating something, but um hopefully we can go through this pretty quickly. Uh goal programming, one of their main program areas is a Fuera Sin Barreras, which is um really a great program, has a Spanish language first model. Um these, um you can see I included their participation. So that's part of our uh analysis is how many people have we served in the last five years or at least recently? So um over eleven hundred participant days, twenty-three program days. Um they also as part of this programming have some of their kind of day events. So like the pumpkin patch, bussas. Um just in twenty twenty-five, this year, they did the family ski program at ski, um was that a Ski Cooper or Copper?
A Ski Cooper.
Is it Ski Cooper? Okay. Um that was super successful. Um so this is, I think, um from my understanding is really uh a core program that really makes goal goal, um that really offers um access, equitable access to care or to services. Um our school programming is probably the most well-known throughout the community, uh also known as like Rocky's Rock. Um so fall, winter, spring break camps, um had three thousand program participant days, hundred and thirty individual families and hundred and eighty-one kids. Um so this does include a learn to skate day as well as Rocky's Rock, so. Um I know I'm going super high level over everyone's program, but hey, yeah. Um then we also have pathways, which is a youth development and leadership uh as kind of a mentorship for young people to try and get them involved in outdoor recreation as a future form of employment. Um having positive peer connections, um had in twenty twenty-four, had twelve youth employees and over three hundred and twenty-four professional development hours, which is incredible. Um I think there's a lot of potential growth here for PROS and GOL to really collaborate on this and how to, how do we best serve youth as well as uh partnerships. So um hi Commissioner Lee. Um uh with neighboring partners like uh you know Copper Mountain or otherwise to help get our young people employed in the outdoor industry. Um so. We also have the Community Gear Library, which if you haven't gone up to GOL to check out their offices, is pretty incredible amount of gear and opportunities they have. Um so they have twelve. Oh, that's weird. I messed this up. Sorry. Um I don't know, I messed that one up. Sorry. But the gear library um uh is used, open for community use. It also like the Fuera Sin Barreras, they also use those um gear as well. Um I heard from GOCO that a lot of other communities are trying to mimic the gear library in other communities um and are using Ludboli County as uh really the basis for that. So um it's pretty incredible for us to be able to be that type of uh trends, you know, uh trending uh new, new things in the outdoor industry. Um so moving into uh recreations, programming, they have a lot. Um and I sectioned them out by ages. So children ages one to four. Uh they have um three different programs, Making Messes is Fun, Wii Sports and Tiny Tumblers. You'll see over here, sorry, Ed Open Gym, the amount of participation that they've had um over the last five years. I do wanna note, I'd ask, over the last five years, some of them were operational in some years, some were not. Some started kind of more recently. So uh when I say over the last five years, I just asked them to go that far back. Um so uh before we go fully on this, let me ask you guys, what do you think is the most popular recreation program by participants?
For the last five years?
Tumbling.
Like out of all?
Curling.
What excuse?
Is curling, I thought that was a club.
It's, it's one of their programs. Mm-hmm.
Did I say curling?
Open gym.
Open gym.
Wow.
Followed by yoga.
Oh.
Cool.
Mm-hmm.
For kids.
I was, I was pretty surprised by that actually. It's like, wow, that's pretty cool. Um so um there's some lessons learned here, like Making Messes is Fun. Um it's a lot of work and so we're trying to figure out kind of moving forward, what makes sense for this age group. Um then youth ages four through sixteen, there's quite a bit here with some really great participant rates um the last five years in baseball and in soccer um both spring and fall. Um some of these are obviously limited because you, there's only so many young people you can um have participate. So um some of these we don't know yet because they haven't gone. Um but it's pretty great, uh basketball and others, um age archery also. Um so I just wanted, I wanted you all to see the amount of programming that both, both GOL and PROS do. It's pretty incredible that they put these together um with a lot of great success for, for folks. Um moving forward to adults, so this is more or less sixteen plus. Um two hundred and two participants over the last five years, oh sorry, six hundred and two for curling. Um but a lot of great for softball, an engagement for volleyball. Uh they did just start open, uh an open climbing with a partnership with CMC this year, um which I've heard great reviews about just having access to that. So um and I think that was just uh recreation, trying to be responsive to what they're carrying, the community wants, since they're trying new things out, which is great to see. Uh so this is kind of a, a bunch of them, either drop-in programs, community programs or uh services for our seniors. Um Walk With Ease has a great amount of participation. This is the Open Gym with thirty-one hundred participants, um which is pretty cool to see. We didn't put obviously the amount of participants in trick-or-treat or mainstream or, or pay the ice, but I'm sure as being community members, you all know how, how engaged those, those have for community members and families, so.
Mm-hmm.
So moving on to open space, um we just listed out kind of the open space recreation facilities or locations that we have. Um they're public spaces, so right, open to everyone, all ages, all demographics. Uh so Hayden Meadows, what's really cool about Hayden Meadows is it is um a, a large portion of it um has ADA accessibility. So I think this is a really great opportunity for us to recruit folks to come and recreate on a different pathway for um accessibility. Um winter grooming, we're gonna be talking about that tomorrow. Um Ski Cooper, obviously you all are well acquainted with that as an opportunity for recreation. And so just wanted to list that uh the county has uh great access to some of these services, so. Um before I move on to next steps, do you have any questions for deputies or, or Duncan about these programs?
I'll save them.
Okay. So uh I just wanted to make sure you all knew. So we uh listed out all of the programs and per, uh participation that we've had over the last five years. And if available this year, we've also put together a grouping of all of the feedback we've gotten from surveys, et cetera, received on each of those. Um so we are reviewing all of that in addition to feedback that we're gonna get from the survey and the flyer. We also have focus groups that we're starting. I just sent out an email to a bunch of folks to try and get them as a, in a focus group today. Um each deputy director, Duncan and myself are taking one of those groups that we are not directly involved in. So people feel safe and comfortable in giving feedback, the good, the bad, the ugly. Um and so I'm gonna be doing a focus group and see Karen's gonna do a focus group on goals programming. Brian's gonna do that on, on Karen's programming, that type of thing. So all of those will be happening, happening over the next month. In addition to the survey, we're gonna be getting all of that information and presenting it to you all um so that you understand what the community is really engaged in, what they're not engaged in, how they wanna see change. Um and then the rubber really meets the road where we make some decisions about either cutting programming or how we really merge this, this and integrate this department and learn best practices from each other. Um so that operational improvements is also gonna be happening. And then hopefully by the end of next month, we'll be coming back to you to get feedback and um really kind of the core work will begin uh in July. So.
Awesome.
Really did not need two hours, but.
And I just looked at it and I was like, what are we gonna talk about?
I know. I mean, who knows? It's a, it's a beloved topic, so I wanted to make sure everyone was here. Um and also as that survey goes out, you all know what the programs are, are familiar with them at least. And um if you have any questions, so that if the community approaches you from that survey, you feel well informed, so.
Is it worth asking how many folks leave the county to participate in swimming? Cause it used to be one of our programming that we did have data for. It, it's one of the topics we have going on.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I don't know.
I would say that we probably have a, a lot of uh just communication and or observational data around need for pool, really trying to get people to enter this thinking outside of rec center and pool uh so that we don't get, which is valid, but we don't wanna get a large influx of people who are very actively participant, participant in um the pool. Work, going on right now, so that we can try to reach some other people. We don't have enough on set from that particular group.
I totally agree with that, Brian. I guess my, one of my queries would be like, when it comes to our programming, say the community can't move forward with creating an aquatic facility, is that something that PROS, GOL department would still work on trying to get access to? Even if it's not a facility created in our community? So then would that become more part of the, the whole of the offerings? That's all, that's all.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll add a comment to that. Uh one of our, I guess my options going forward is to look at.
Right.
Purchase, like a big wood space and surrounding pools for like county business, that's.
Or transportation.
Yeah, that's an option, right?
Right, so I was just wondering.
We actually did check into that and like as soon as we had to close down.
Mm-hmm.
Amber was on the phone all around trying to see like, can you give us like a community discount? Can you do this? Can we have like one whole swim lesson just for our kids, whatever? We didn't really check into transportation because nobody was really willing to work with us as much as we thought they would be. But maybe it would change now, I don't know.
Plenty of different leaderships.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as we're looking forward and talking about what we wanna invest in or what we can afford to invest in, like.
Yeah, well, and we could like the pool down.
There is the Swim Squared now. He does offer lessons, but maybe we can figure out some sort of partnership. I know Project Dream has been taking kids there, so I think it's definitely something we can start exploring since we do have something at least in town and then figuring out
Yeah.
um other spaces for maybe older kids or, or whatnot. Yeah.
Do we feel like we got some of that data from feasibility?
Yes. I guess that it would be nice. I do feel like we have that data and it's missing from the questioning here. So as people are looking at what we're offering, it's also like, well, why aren't you even talking about aquatics? Like, do you even care about aquatics? And I think we all do care about aquatics, but it's not something we're, we're currently offering.
There's a question in the survey where you, it's like, it's more or less the VOCC's priorities.
Yeah.
And one of them is the pool and they can toggle it to be number one priority or lower.
Yeah.
Um and then we also have a question of like, what do you wanna see us do? What are we missing? That we can have at least open response.
Okay.
But I, I share Ryan's feedback of like it could very much get skewed.
To be a deluge.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it's a good, it's a really good point. Which is, ugh, it's a shame. This looks awesome. I appreciate the diligent approach to this conversation.
Yeah, um. We have a lot of really successful programming. Uh it's pretty great to see. Um and I know that there are already some steps being implemented to improve things. I don't know, Karen, if you guys wanna talk about like your training for coaches for baseball?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add um one thing in there too. Like some of our stuff may seem like it's smaller numbers, like our Making Messes, like we had nine kids this, this time, but that's, ten's our capacity, cause nine little toddlers is a lot um for that. So sometimes I think you see that number like, oh, they only had nine, but it's like ten's our capacity for that one hour. Uh so some of the stuff is a little bit lower, like Lauren had mentioned, some things we didn't run because we don't have an instructor or still weird times with COVID stuff. Um so, but yeah, so we have started implementing and Brian and I are working together to try to get um some of our policies as one. Um we've started implementing coach trainings, so and as long as, well, we've done captains meetings. We're just trying to make it a little bit more streamlined. Um for all of our volunteer coaches come together, we put together like slideshow and say, okay, here are some of the standards that we follow as a volunteer coach. Um here's like a quick concussion training, here's what to look for in your equipment bag, here's our contacts, here's just some basic season info. And um there's always options for extra training too, so. Do you wanna add anything to that, Katie?
Yeah, we do the same thing with our adult leagues. Um every captain has to meet with us before it starts. We go over the rules, make sure everyone's on the same page. And we're not set on the rules. Like we have, we played soccer last season and these rules didn't work. We talked about it and we adjusted together and then um send the rules out as, as one. Um what else? Yeah, yeah, we've just really tried to, I guess streamline things is what I'm trying to say.
Do you have um track how many people use the ice rink? I know, I know that data wasn't on there for the event, but I was just wondering.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that seems, even for the short amount of time that it's, that it's open, like that's one of our most favorite apps.
Well, yeah.
The pool used to be open year-round. We actually got, had more participants at the ice rink in the short amount of time than the whole year at the pool.
Whoa, believe that.
So, I mean, it's so busy. Like that's the teen hangout, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and um like this was more focused on programming, but we do have um, like we ran out Sixth Street Gym. We ran out park, our parks, Ice Palace Park booked out every single weekend um in June and July. So we do have um data for that kinda stuff too.
Cool.
Yeah.
Is there any opportunity to turn that place into a roller rink in summer?
We have talked about that and it's just so expensive to get those skates. Like we did offer, um a couple of years ago, somebody talked to me about uh roller derby. There was a girls' league of roller derby.
Mm-hmm.
And they decided they didn't wanna have it there because it was kinda holy in places.
Mm-hmm.
But um we did give like an hour or two a day to um just roller skating and not many took us up on it. We didn't, we weren't good about advertising it because it wasn't really the safest place, but we had it available for people. But yeah, we have talked about getting skates or something.
Well, and I think the whole surface area would have to be redone though too. Which we have talked about that too, just because um I, I think we all know the hot, hot topic is that the ice doesn't last long enough.
Yeah.
So we've talked about what other surface could we use along with trying to cover over it, but yeah.
Yeah.
I can see the kids wanting the Saturday night at the roller rink.
Yeah, I think that would be popular.
It is jamming. I would want a Utah.
Yeah.
Well, I saw somebody, and it's all ages too.
Yeah.
It's what I did.
Yeah.
It's not just, I, you know. I saw somebody roller skating um at the parking lot at LCES yesterday.
Cause it's the cleanest, youngest high school.
Yeah. Yeah, if we could get some nice cement or something, that would be better to use it for the ice to last and for roller skating.
I mean, people roller skate at the skate park too, just there's more and more of that happening all the time. Just so you guys know, it's extreme roller skating is a thing.
I guess it's, what would be fun is like actually having the Huck Finn open.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Having that open, having music and lighting sessions, yeah.
Ice skating sessions, yeah. I think that would be fun.
I think it would be popular too.
That'd be awesome.
People would visit from range, I think people would come up and visit from one of us and we're gonna, there's nothing like that in, anywhere.
I think so too.
Mm-hmm. Well, and it's been so much a part of the indoor rec conversation over the last few years too. It's like, that's a multi-generational thing like ice skating.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's in our budget for the recovery and to buy skates.
Done. Yeah.
Come back in August and just tell us how much, just tell us how much it costs.
Has there ever been a study done about or costs of the analysis of the roof, of our A roof?
I don't think there's ever been a full analysis done of that. There's been a lot of talk.
Yeah.
Um it just hasn't fully come to that, like what would, what kind of structure would we use? What would it cost? How long would it last? That kind, kinda stuff.
And so ice skating kind of falls off in February after all, like after the newness wears off. It kind of falls off in February, so I mean it would be nice for it to last in March through like spring breaks.
Yeah.
But locally, it kind of falls off in February for some reason.
Yeah.
Cause it's spring in my building.
The ice gets pretty chunky and.
Yeah, the ice quality suffers, but as soon as you hit March, it's starting to get pocketed out.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's that, Andy?
Yeah, even in the middle of February, when we're trying to finish up hockey and everything, it, it's pretty iffy. Like we, now that we have regular ice guys that go out and flood and Zamboni and broom and everything, it's been lasting longer and it's been nicer, but it's still like that constant sun all day long.
Yeah.
Kills it, but, but yeah, roller, sorry, I went off on a tangent, but roller skating would be great.
Yeah.
We love rec tangents. This is our favorite.
Oh, come for our office anytime then.
Well, hopefully that comes up on the survey. Is that a, is that an option? Would you like roller skating, disco ball?
It says what we not offer, right?
Some seventies.
I see, like you see. Dome Community Field, I think we might say something about Huck Finn. I will double check. Would you like us to add that as an option?
Yeah, we'll check that.
Yeah.
I've covered the ice.
You might as well put the cover on there.
You did, with the ice rink? I'll double check.
I don't know.
Are you, you saying dome Huck Finn?
No, it's dome.
Well, just the cover, okay. I was just saying, cause that's such a pretty view, well, so is that community. I would hate to ruin that deal with the dome, but that's just me.
Hey, just so you know, E E uh is against it, E E from the school.
We wanna play. Yeah.
Because it would limit the amount of people it could spectate.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
We can make one side see-through. Like the sphere? Make it really big.
Okay, I like it.
We better, we better uh find some new revenue streams.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, we're on it. We're truly gonna find the money. Um, okay. I don't know if the gentleman from CPAG is here or not.
I think he was on there.
That'd be amazing.
Well, and maybe we have to. Pretty present.
Present.
There we go. Um.
How many, how many um skates are in our current fleet?
That's good.
Um.
Just guess, just guess. So you don't have to be right.
Um probably four hundred.
Okay.
I don't know, we give them sharpened every year, so I can plug them in exactly, but.
No, it's okay.
And we do upgrade our, um upgrade the skates every year, especially some of those little sizes that get used so heavily during the season, like uh Project Dream coming four days a week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gold um comes a lot, so.
Hey Kyle, this is Lauren from Lake County. Can you join? We added a lot of.
We have some from little tiny kids, but they don't make those personal ones. That's why we got those.
Let's make it something a bit strapped in there, you know? Breaking in.
Cool.
I love.
Thanks for the update, Kyle, so.
Speaking, speaking of money, we've been able to write a lot of um operational support into a lot of grants recently in terms of building out gear, so that's been helpful for GOL specifically. I know that like we can probably extend that, but capital improvements, I'm always looking into what needs to be said, kinda gathering a list of, a wish list of the, from the department, I think it's gonna be helpful cause then we can be really looking out for what specifically is out there right now. And there's.
what specifically is out there right now, and there's outdoor access is important in the state, so.
Yeah, heck yeah. Thank you.
Which is recreational access and mental and physical health improvements is important, so as long as we have like a long wish list, then.
Sweet. I just read, mm-hmm. Hi Kyle.
Hi, everyone.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Are you ready, Matt?
I am ready.
To move us on to the next topic.
Sure, sure, that's it.
That's it, yeah, I think that's that, just think that's, yeah. How do you end up with us?
I was ready for more.
Do you have more questions?
No, no, I'm good. We'll just see what shakes out, right?
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to item number two, an overview and discussion regarding the Dutch, Dutch Henry culvert in California Gulf led by Kyle Sandor, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Go ahead, Kyle.
So, um, I didn't prepare anything to talk about today. I was kinda under the impression that you guys had some questions for me about logistics and um kind of the path forward for installing that culvert.
Yeah.
I can talk a little bit about that section of the site, um, just to give you guys all a little bit of context, so. California Gulf itself is uh part of operable unit eight of the Cal Gulf site. There were a number of remedial actions taken within the Gulf itself, uh mostly uh to remove and consolidate uh tailings that were in the Gulf. All that being said, I took a look at the work that was done historically and it does not appear that we did any of that remedial action in the general area that you guys are talking about, the uh the tubing hill. That uh in the documents that I looked at, they used to be like, they called it like the ski club area. But the the closest uh cleanup was just upstream of the the area that you guys are looking at. So, there are institutional controls that are in place for both the city and the county that talk about uh disturbance of operable unit eight. There are some distinctions in those ICs when it comes to impacting um what we call engineered remedies, so like where we did that cleanup work or non-engineered remedies, that's just like kind of any area within the operable unit. Both of them require approval uh from CDPE anytime that you're looking at um doing any sort of excavation, um grading, building or anything like that. So we can talk a little bit about like what that would look like, but you know, with all of that, do you guys have any questions about this part of the site or anything like that?
How long would that take and uh is it feasible that we could get it done by fall?
Oh, certainly, in terms of my approval, it it'll be a very straightforward process. We typically do these sorts of approvals when there's um building it within the city limits, so we'll work with a developer and we usually require them to put together what's called a materials management plan. It's essentially just a plan that documents how you're gonna handle metals impacted soils as part of your development. I don't know if that's necessarily appropriate here, it's not required by any of the institutional control language. So it could be as simple as a written request to me via email and then an email response back from me giving you approval. If you wanted to, you know, and I I would always recommend this, you you could uh have someone put together a materials management plan for you. But I could even talk through some of, you know, what those requirements would be, uh they're, they'll be pretty straightforward.
Can you just give us a broad overview of something like that?
Yeah, so typically what we're trying to do is minimize uh, you know, impacts during the handling of that material, so. You know, things like minimizing dust generation, yeah, uh folks use uh uh water trucks to wet down material prior to construction, so that's that's one option. Uh, we also wanna make sure that any impacted material isn't kind of leaving the site, so if you're uh working with uh like dump trucks or anything like that, using a track on, track off pad. Those sorts of things. Beyond that, there there's really not much else uh in terms of material handling that we have to be concerned about here. I wasn't able to find any sa- specific sample results for this area. Likely the, you know, the this stretch of the the Gulf had metals concentrations below our site trigger criteria, so there's still maybe elevated metals, they just didn't rise to the level of our site cleanup goals.
Okay.
That makes it so much easier.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, it really should be straightforward, the uh, we also, uh, so Numa or Resurrection does have environmental covenants within operable unit eight, but not this stretch, so you don't have to worry about that.
Could this be easier? Is there?
No, it it really should be, it really should be straightforward, you know, the the main thing that we wanna make sure is like after the project's over, it doesn't create any like flooding or any issues like that. There's nothing in our, like the IC documents or like our regulations that dictate like the design and, you know, the engineering of this culvert, but that's just a consideration that you know, the the city or the county should, you know, uh take into account when they're, you know, planning, you know, the culvert size.
Michael, do those five foot culverts, you think those, those three five foot culverts we found will work for you?
I think they should, um, that should hold more than enough water because the one, the pipes down below it are only um thirty-six inch pipes, and there's two of those.
Yeah, there's not much flow there.
No, there's not, unless during runoff, it goes up a little bit, but not very much at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the conditions of the Gulf are more or less steady state at this point because of the discharge from the water treatment plant. Uh, like Michael's saying, it does increase a little bit during the snow melt. But, you know, if the if the culvert's appropriately sized and you're just keeping an eye on, you know, any debris or anything like that, that might be clogging it up, it I can't imagine it's gonna be an issue.
What about, they're like, it's marshy down there? Do we need to be good, since it's like man-made marsh?
Not, not from a super fun perspective, um. Yeah, that could be, you know, a question for our water quality control division at CDPE. But at least from the site side of things, uh, that's not really something that we're looking at.
Awesome, okay.
So Kyle, I do have a question.
That was my. Go ahead, Mike.
Can we just manage this stuff in place possibly by covering it up?
Yeah, that's my recommendation for like kinda any of these developments that happen within the site area. If you can manage the material in place to the extent, you know, possible, uh, that's what I, that's what I recommend. Uh, for this project, you guys would be able to use the uh site-wide repository because it's a um, you know, a county and city you know, project within the site area, so um that that's always an option too, you guys, you, any excavated material could just go to the repository.
Cool.
Cool.
I guess, so, um, one thing I did just think about the repository, so typically we require analytical data to support the, that material going into the repository. I, let me double check the language to see if that provision still applies to this type of project, it likely would. And in that case, you know, we we, I could, you know, give you a little bit more information about what, you know, collecting a sample or two would look like.
But if we, but, but what you're saying is that we can actually just keep it all on site, we're probably gonna need all that dirt to do our.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you could keep it on, keep it on site if um if you do think it's gonna be used in an area that um, you know, could lead to exposure, it might be worth even grabbing a sample just to see what the concentrations are before you like spread it out on ground le- level or anything like that, but if it's gonna be used subsurface or, you know, like to stabilize the culvert or anything like that, there's less of it, you know, less concern there.
Okay, awesome. So next, so just so I understand, next what happens is that Mike and Kyle get to connect about materials and our, our plan, our materials plan?
So the, yeah, the next step would really be to, to put something in writing to me requesting, you know, this, this project to take place. I do, like I said, I do recommend materials management plan be developed for uh, you know, projects like this, but there's nothing in the the regs that require it, so I really don't, typically, like I was saying, we we have those materials management plans put in place when there's like a residential development or you know, commercial development happen, happening within the city limits. It's, I think it's more important for those types of activities. I, I would say that just a simple request to me and then a response from me would satisfy the requirements of the institutional control here.
Awesome.
On our way.
Thank you, Candace. Thank you, Mike, thank you, Kyle.
Yeah, no problem, and uh, yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out, um, but, yeah, we'll definitely, I'll work with uh Michael on getting that approval.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
All right.
Got work is done here.
Wow.
Thank you, Kyle, thank you, Mike.
Easy, yeah, trying not to make it too difficult for you guys.
It's very exciting.
Michael, just let us know if you do anything from us.
All right, will do.
Is it weird that now I'm really concerned about the culvert cuz that step just seemed so easy, that there's gotta be something waiting for us that's scary or there's gonna be like an old burial ground over there or something we didn't know about or?
There, there really shouldn't be, like I was saying before, if if there were impacts, they would have done cleanup work in this area, cuz they, they investigated it extensively uh back when they were doing all this work, so, um, the fact that they didn't do anything there is, is a good sign.
Yeah, can Michael, I think we might have talked before about the um, the, we also was talking about with the marshy part of it, if there are any
Corps of, or any.
any materials that qualify as wetlands that we might need to connect with the Corps of Engineers on.
Yeah, Corps of Engineers or the State Water Quality Control Division, um, that, those would be my, the two people I would talk to if you have any concerns about that. But uh, it's, it's been my experience at the Army Corps, um unless it's kind of a major issue, they don't, they won't typically weigh in, so it it's worth at least reaching out to them, but I wouldn't expect, um I wouldn't expect uh any direction specifically for this uh project.
Wasn't the wetlands, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, go for it, Andy.
Wasn't, wasn't the wetlands issue already brought up in a meeting and it was determined that they were not native wetlands, they were wetlands because of redirection to stream, like it was an artificial wetland almost, so they weren't considered a wetland? Didn't we already have that conversation?
We talked about that being a potential, but that wasn't like determined by anybody who has the ability to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's definitely something you wanna determine in advance, cuz if you say, oh, that's all it is and you build and then the Army Corps comes in and it's not a good day.
Right.
So Candace, are you gonna reach out to them or would Michael do that with? You, like, who's, who's gonna reach out to the?
Well, I think maybe start as Kyle had suggested with the, the water quality folks and get their
Okay.
impressions and they might have information to suggest whether we need to reach out to the Army Corps too. That might be the, the next best.
So I'll circle with Michael.
Okay.
Make sure on the same page.
Jenny could do that.
We can reach out to the, both of the groups that we need to, one for the letter, for CDPE, and then I'll reach out to the water quality.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get you a point of contact at Water Quality Control Division. Uh, I don't have one off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll ask around a little bit to see if I can find a name for you guys.
Okay.
Great.
Can we just talk anticipated timeline, like when should the county commissioners, when should we expect to like have heard that this has gone through and that?
Well, that's.
So I think.
I mean, probably.
I mean, on our end, like, yes, we've got this all submitted, Kyle said that it'll be really quick, coming back from him. And when, it sounds like most of it has to do with how much we're getting our ducks in a row.
Michael, can I just find a time on your calendar for us to get together? This week's a little cold.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Are you around on Friday, Michael?
No.
No, okay. I'll find a time on both of our calendars, so maybe Monday next week.
Yeah, we'll find it.
Okay.
Do you think any?
I can't think of anything right now.
Okay. You got enough dirt? Where are you gonna think, where are you, where are you gonna get the dirt from, Michael?
I have a lot of dirt at the airport for free.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Cool, shall we conclude? This concludes the work session on June tenth, concluding at uh two o'clock in the afternoon, thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.